Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Gail's here.
Guzakowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the pledgeable agents. Tonight, we have Cub Scout Troop 316, and they've offered to lead us in the pledge. So if you would, boys.
Pledgeable agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, boys. Approval of minutes of April 17, 2018. Everybody, please take a look. There are no omissions, corrections. Motion, please.
Kurkowski will make a motion to approve the minutes of April 17, 2018.
Oracle, second.
Roll call. Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Before we get started, I was talking to staff this week that do the minutes, and if you could, before you speak, please try to identify yourself. Sometimes they have a hard time identifying voices. Some of us stand out more than others, but if you could, somewhere when you're speaking, just identify yourself or your district, please. Item four, we have a mayoral proclamation for Buddy Poppy Days. Catherine?
Mayoral proclamation, Buddy Poppy Days, Meyer Duzek, VFW Post 8482, May 4th, 5th, and 6th of 2018. Whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, Meyer Duzek, Post 8482 of Oak Creek, Wisconsin, has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies will be held in Oak Creek on May 4th, May 5th, and May 6th. And whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas the basic purpose for the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Daniel Bukavich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our veterans. Be it further resolved that I urge all citizens to where a Buddy Poppy is mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms that we continue to enjoy as American citizens.
And also, we have another proclamation to go with that for the actual Poppy Days. Catherine?
Poppy Days, May 11th, May 12th, and May 13th, 2018, Oshlager Dahlman, American Legion Post 434 and Auxiliary. Whereas the Oshlager Dahlman, American Legion Post and Auxiliary 434 have set aside Friday, May 11th, Saturday, May 12th, and Sunday, May 13th, 2018, to honor all of our veterans of all wars by distribution of Poppies on these days in our city. And whereas the annual distribution of Poppies is one of the American Legion Posts and Auxiliaries, many veteran projects of which we are proud. And whereas all money received from the distribution goes directly to the following: 60% of all money received will be distributed for direct aid to veterans and their families in the need in the City of Oak Creek. 40% of all money received will be distributed for scholarships and loans for veteran children, rehabilitation projects at Zablocke VA Medical Center, Wisconsin Veterans Home at King, Wisconsin, Christmas gift shop at Zablocke VA Medical Center, Camp American Legion, a rehabilitation center for veterans, National Child Welfare Foundation, All Veteran Affairs, and Rehabilitation Programs. Be it therefore resolved that I, Daniel J. Bukavich, Mayor of the City of Oak Creek, do hereby proclaim May 11th, 12th, and 13th, 2018, to be Poppy Days in the City of Oak Creek. Be it further resolved that I encourage the citizens of Oak Creek to contribute generously for the annual poppy distribution by the American Legion Post and Auxiliary 434.
Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate that. And we do have a tradition, the first week of May, our Poppy Princess always joins us. This year, 2018, the Poppy Princess is Audrey Secret. Would you like to come up? Again, she's going to do a collection. She's going to start with the council and everybody here, and she collects for those worthy causes that Catherine read off in the proclamation. Parents, if you'd like to come up, you can come up and get closer pictures if you want. I couldn't reach over. Another year or two, she's taller than me.
I would not.
Thank you very much, Audrey, and thanks, thank you to the parents for, you know, guiding her through this journey that she's going to take here to raise money for those funds. Appreciate it. I hope you did well tonight, and thank you for coming in. Item number six, we have our last council proclamation. And Catherine, when you're ready, if you would please read that into the record.
Ready. Congratulations and welcome to the American Legion Riders, Wisconsin District 4-5 and Post 434, along with American Legion Riders from across the country. Whereas the American Legion was formed on March 15th, 1919, as a wartime veterans organization focusing on service to veterans, service members, and their families and communities. And whereas the Oshlager Dahlman, American Legion Post 434 was chartered in 1946 and is nicknamed "The Heart of the City of Oak Creek," and actively works to support local events such as National Night Out and the Fourth of July Parade. And whereas the American Legion Auxiliary was founded in 1919 and was established to assist the American Legion with their mission of service. And whereas the Sons of the American Legion was created in 1932 and was made up of male descendants of people who served in the United States Armed Forces during times specified by the American Legion. And whereas American Legion Riders, ALR, was established as a post-level activity at Garden City American Legion Post 396, Department of Michigan. And whereas the National Executive Committee of the American Legion, during a regular meeting assembled in Indianapolis, Indiana, on October 17th and 18th, 2007, that the American Legion Riders, ALR, was adopted as a national program. And whereas American Legion Riders are one of the strongest fundraising groups as a program operating under the Legion family, raising millions of dollars for the Legacy Scholarship Fund alone in just a few short years. Whereas American Legion Riders, Wisconsin District 4-5 and Oshlager Dahlman, Post 434, offered to host this year's 2018 Riding on Military Parade, ROMP, event in Oak Creek, Wisconsin, in May of 2017. And whereas American Legion Riders of Honor decided at its meeting in June of 2017 to in fact hold the 2018 ROMP here in Oak Creek at Post 434. And whereas this group of like-minded Legion family members that ride motorcycles, love the outdoors, and having fun is gathering in Oak Creek to renew old friendships and establish new ones. And whereas this year's ROMP is also charged with trying to raise money for charities that do work to service our veterans, service members, and their families and communities on a local, state, and national level. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the common council of the City of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations and warmest welcome to all the American Legion Riders participating in the 2018 International ROMP. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, then the City Clerk be, and she is hereby directed, to transmit a suitable copy thereof to American Legion Riders, Wisconsin Districts 4-5, presented and adopted this first day of May, 2018.
Great. Well, thank you. It is an event coming up here in Oak Creek. They provide an invaluable service, as you heard from the proclamation. Would anybody like to comment on it at all? Anybody familiar with what they do? If you've ever paid attention, they're at all our parades, they're at all our military events, they're always present throughout the city. Would you guys like to come up and say a few words?
My name is Steve Conkey. I am the president of the American Legion Riders, District 4-5, for the State of Wisconsin. And with me is my wife, Mary. She is the State Secretary for the American Legion Riders for Wisconsin. And I just want to thank everybody for allowing this proclamation to get submitted to you and hopefully approved so that we can complete our goal of having that be recognized by all of the riders that are coming to participate. At this point, we have over 100 people that have signed up from around the country that are coming and will be staying in and around the City of Oak Creek, going to different venues and restaurants and stuff like that. And I'm hoping that the people enjoyed enough to come back and visit in September when Harley-Davidson is having their 115th. And that's kind of like, you can't say "Super Bowl" anymore without getting in trouble. You can't say "Harley-Davidson 115th" without any worries, but that's what I'm hoping. And I'm hoping that everybody has a good, safe time. And once again, I thank you for your proclamation.
Steve, I'm going to come down and present this to you, but before we do, we're going to make it official, and we're going to ask for a motion and a vote.
I'll move to approve Council Proclamation Number 18-07. Congratulations and welcome to the American Legion Riders, Wisconsin District 4-5 and Post 434, along with American Legion Riders from across the country.
Who's the call, Gail? Second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye. Great. Would you like to come down, thank you for your service, and present you with this proclamation on behalf of the city and the entire council? Next on the agenda is a presentation by John Richards concerning a presentation on the banning of coal tar sealants. John, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for having me here tonight. I will do my best to stay under the three-minute limit. I'm going to go through the PowerPoint fairly quickly, but you have material there. I hope you feel free to ask any questions today or later if they come to mind after the presentation. I'm going to be talking tonight about PAHs. And before I got involved with this effort with Clean Wisconsin, I didn't know what PAHs are, but they're a compound similar to DDT and PCBs. And like DDT and PCBs, they've been settling in our waterways. But unlike PCBs and DDTs that we've been working on for a quarter century to reduce, PAHs are a fairly new thing on the landscape, and they are showing up in Milwaukee County waterways in a very profound way with big impacts to human health. PAHs, by the way, stands for polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, but for obvious reasons, I'm going to call them PAHs for us this presentation. Next. About a year ago, the Milwaukee County Intergovernmental Cooperation Council, looking at the data that's coming out from the U.S. Geological Survey on the prevalence of PAHs in Milwaukee waterways, passed a resolution encouraging Milwaukee County communities to adopt an ordinance banning the use and sale of coal tar sealants. And so that's what we have, we're requesting Oak Creek to pass tonight, or not, tonight or at a future meeting. We do believe that this will have a big impact on the environment and will protect human health. The U.S. Geological Survey did an extensive review of waterways in Milwaukee County about a year and a half ago. And as you can see, the results were really disheartening, where 78% of the samples collected in this region exceeded the probable effects threshold, meaning that PAHs were in the waterways in a big way, in 78% of the samples. We also know where these PAHs are coming from, and it's from a substance that people use to seal driveways and parking lots called coal tar sealants. And so we know through lots of scientific research that I can go through with you at any time, that the vast majority of these PAHs come from this product, coal tar sealants. Children's Hospital and the Ascension, Wisconsin System, which is now made up of the Wheaton and Columbia St. Mary's systems, have come out in favor of the coal tar sealant ordinance because they agree with us that banning coal tar sealants is the best way to address this very serious problem that we have for human health with PAHs in our waterways. And if you can bear with you for just a minute, if you look at that, at the graph on the PowerPoint, you can see the really huge difference between a driveway with coal tar sealants and a driveway with no coal tar sealants. The driveway with no coal tar sealants have PAHs in the range of roughly nine milligrams per kilograms. The one with coal tar sealants has PAHs prevalent thousands of times more, almost 5,000 times more. So there's quite a bit of research showing that PAHs are a major cancer risk, especially for children. And that's why Children's Hospital got involved with this right away, because they saw the evidence that we saw, and exposure to PAHs actually increases childhood cancer, not by 14%, but by 14 times. So it's important that we have a, recognize that we have a known cancer risk and that we have a known way to prevent it. We've been working with communities throughout Milwaukee County to pass the ordinance that we're bringing before you tonight for your consideration. And for that matter, we're working with the Fund for Lake Michigan to pass this ordinance in every community up and down the Lake Michigan coastline, from Pleasant Prairie in the south to Sturgeon Bay in the north. But our first step is to make sure that we pass it in Milwaukee County. So so far, we've passed it in several communities in Milwaukee County, including your neighbors of Franklin and the City of Milwaukee. Just last month, the ordinance passed by unanimous vote in Greenfield. I should also say that in every community where we've brought this in Milwaukee County, the ordinance is passed by unanimous vote. These bans are very effective in reducing the threat of PAHs. And this chart shows what happened in Austin, Texas, which was the first place in America to ban coal tar sealants roughly 10 years ago. And when people talk about the presence of PAHs in the environment, there is an argument that people make saying, "Well, it's because of car emissions." But as you can see, car emissions from roughly the 60s to 2010 to the present day have gone down pretty dramatically. But PAHs, and what the item on the left, show PAH levels in the various waterways around Austin. You can see that as U.S. vehicle emissions were going down, PAH levels were going up in the waterways. And that line that you see just before 2010 is when Austin passed their ordinance. And you can see the PAH levels in those waterways go down dramatically after they passed that ordinance. And so an ordinance like this really is effective, and it does the job to protect human health and the environment. Next. A common question that we have from every place we go to talk to is, "What do we do about enforcement?" Because as a local government, you don't have the resources of the EPA or the DNR to go out and enforce this. And so what we rely on is voluntary enforcement. We will work with you to contact people who are likely to apply coal tar sealants, to work with you with messaging for your constituents, to make sure they know that it would not be allowed to buy or apply coal tar sealants in the City of Oak Creek. And in the communities that have passed these ordinances so far, voluntary compliance or the voluntary enforcement regime seems to work pretty well. Having said that, the ordinance that we're presenting to you does have some penalties in it, and we can certainly work with you on that. In the communities that have passed this ordinance in Milwaukee County, about half of them have taken the penalties in the model ordinance, and the other half have put them into the general penalty section of their ordinances. And so we don't really, you know, we're not going to lay in the middle of the street to fight about, you know, the levels of the penalties, and we'll leave it up to you on what penalty is appropriate. It is important to have some penalty in place in case someone is intent on disobeying the law and they're caught. There needs to be some sanction for that. But by and large, the enforcement of these ordinances is voluntary. There's nothing in the proposed ordinance that requires remediation, that requires testing or anything like that. It's just advisory. And so with that, we would certainly urge you to pass the proposed ordinance that was recommended by the Intergovernmental Cooperation Council. I sent Catherine a copy of the ordinance, and I hope you have that in front of you tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you would have.
Steve?
For the record, Alderman Kurkowski. Sir, when you talked about probable effects threshold, what is the threshold? I mean, when we talk about the Water Department has so many parts per million or something like that, and if it goes above, so what is the threshold? What are you talking about?
Yeah, in terms of a numerical number, I don't know that tonight, but I can get that for you. But the probable effects threshold essentially is the threshold at which this starts to have an effect on aquatic life or human life. But I can get you the numerical figure of how many parts per billion that would be or million that would be.
Right. Okay, thank you. And when you talked about cancer-causing, studies show what type of cancer this causes? Or is that just a generic term that causes cancer?
Well, mostly cancer of the liver, of the intestinal tract. What happens often with kids, and the most common way that kids get exposed to PAHs is if they're playing near a driveway or a surface that has had coal tar sealant on it, and that coal tar sealant sloughs off, and they pick it up as they play, and as kids do, they put, especially little kids, you know, they'll put that in their mouths and they ingest it, and so that tends to impact their internal organs.
Right. Thank you.
John Alderman, Rich Dukenyak. Is there a significant difference, John, in the price of non-coal tar sealants?
No. And matter of fact, one of the items that we can make available to you is a long list of alternative products that you would be able to use under this ban, and there's a list of about 20 of them. And this question just came up when we were making a presentation in another community about two weeks ago. And there is no significant price difference.
Thank you. Greg?
Hi, Alderman. Greg Lorik. Just referencing the slide on who enacted the ban, I noticed that the entire state of Minnesota is blue. Is that, did they do a statewide?
They did.
Ban, and has that ever been approached in Wisconsin?
Well, it has not been approached in Wisconsin, but we're learning from what happened in Illinois, where they did try to pass it. And there, the industry that makes coal tar sealants, which has some operations in Illinois, came and defeated it in the state legislature there. And so we recognize this as a local issue, where local governments have the authority to act, and we are encouraging local governments to act, to enforce it here. It may be great if we could have a statewide ban, but, you know, I know that if we have something that we know is a problem for human health, and we know the cause of it, and we know how to stop it, local governments in Wisconsin are empowered to take action to pass an ordinance to protect citizens from a known health hazard. And so that's what we're asking you to do tonight. Okay?
Alderman, Mike Toman. John, are the, what about the availability to these substitute products? I can see, I can see this having an immediate effect on, you know, homeowners that don't want to put it on their own driveway to put their families at risk. I can see that. What about contractors that use these products? Are they going to be able to, is there availability there for these substitute products?
Yes. And I say that pretty confidently, because a ban like this has been in place in Dane County for almost 10 years, and the Dane County industry seems to be working just fine. And in the communities that we've been going to, we've been asking And in the communities that we've been going to, we've been asking, the Department of Public Works uses alternative products, coal tar sealants. And universally, we're finding that people are already using alternative products. And so, I haven't asked that question to Oak Creek yet, but I suspect the answer is that that's the case here, too.
Ken?
Alderman Gale, 5th District. John, a couple of questions for you. I saw on your, item footnote 15 in your, the council report, a couple of folks who have local operations, retailers, Tru Valley and Blaine's, Farmer Fleet still apparently carry those, are they, have they actively said no, or do you know of why, or?
We have, we haven't, we have not approached them. But we have not heard, they have not opposed us in any community where we've been so far.
Okay, and then, on the commercial side, I think Alderman Tillman approached this a little bit. We don't see the model language here, but I'm wondering how, it appears as though you try to deal with the homeowner in terms of applying that on their own driveway. How do you deal with, how is the ban approached from a commercial standpoint for, you know, commercial crews going around and doing this for, you know, neighborhoods at a time? So, I'm wondering how that, this language can actually kind of affect them.
Well, what, you know, the language explicitly says you cannot apply this substance on a driveway or parking lot in the city of Oak Creek. So, that applies not only to a homeowner applying it on their own, but it would apply to anybody who would apply it on somebody else's property, too.
Mike, is there typically a permit pulled for driveways? Is that just kind of coming and going?
There is not for resealing of parking lots or driveways, for that matter. But I could tell you, like, just kind of comment on the PH issue. We deal with this all the time on all of our construction projects, PAHs in soils. And so, we take this very seriously, and so obviously, this has a lot of merit. We, I am in possession of that model ordinance. Catherine, I think you have it as well. Mayor Pukavich gave it to me last week. And I didn't know that we were going to be talking about this this evening. I could have, weren't getting that prepared, but we certainly can bring it if that's the council's wishes.
Chris, anything?
Alderman Guzikowski, 6th District. Just a couple of things here. As far as for residential, you know, I need to go and redo my driveway right now. This is not the asphalt we're talking about. We're talking about the sealant that's going on top of it.
That's right.
The coating up, if you will. There's also, sometimes they're trying to close up cracks, so there's going to be maybe a gap that they want to close up.
Like a thick tar on there, right. And that thick tar does not, that's not what we're talking about here. This is a, usually a decorative sealant, you know? But that thick tar does not come under this ban.
So, enforceability, then, you know, when you're talking about the residential personnel, you know, they're doing it on their own. If they don't go to the right store and it'll have the right stuff, how do they know or not know in terms of getting the right product?
Right. No, that's a, that's a really good and important question because the key is to make sure that people know it. My experience is that if people know there's a law, they try to obey it. So, the real question is making sure that citizens know that these products are banned in Oak Creek. And we'll be happy to work with you and staff here at the city to get that word out. But it is a public, you know, it's part of its public education, making sure people know what they can and can't do.
Again, it came forward to me, I brought it forward to council. It's really seems to me the right thing to do, as long as our staff is comfortable with what the ordinance would be. Enforcement from the residential end is on their honor. We'd probably have to list it in our RFPs going forward to anybody that does work in the city, for the city. You talked about penalties, so can you just give some examples of what other people have imposed for penalties if a homeowner or contractor is in violation?
Sure. The model ordinance has penalties that basically range from $500 to $1,000. And communities sometimes have a penalty provision in the ordinance, is a general penalty provision. And Mike, and I apologize, I didn't look at your ordinances for this meeting, but I would strongly suspect that you do. So, those come into play for a violation of any ordinance, and they range from typically from $5,000 to, sorry, from $5 to as much as a couple thousand dollars, depending on the seriousness of the offense and the nature of the offender. And so, as I said, we like the penalty in the model ordinance, but we will leave it up to your judgment on whether you want to stay with those penalties or not. Greenfield, for what it's worth, took the penalties in the model ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you, John. I appreciate it. If there's no further questions for John? No?
Thanks.
Just for discussion here, I would, I would like to urge our staff to take a look at that ordinance and bring it back and present it to us, and we consider it for passage here in the city of Oak Creek.
We have to work on a communication program then, too, Dan.
Yeah, for sure. And communications would have to go out, which, you know, Facebook, Acorn, of course, any way we can get the message out to people. But that would be my urgent, my suggestion. Does anybody have disagreements with that? Mike, would you please take a look at that and prepare that for a future council meeting?
Yes, we'll do.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, we have mayoral appointments. As you can see, basically, everything stayed the same. There was no turnover in the council or in the mayor's seat. So, small claims, we have Alderman Dukenyak, Library Board, Alderman Lorick, Water and Sewer Utility Commission, Alderman Gale, Landscape and Beautification Committee, Alderman Guzikowski, Tourism Commission, Alderman Gale, Community Development Authority, Alderman Guzikowski and Alderman Gale. Oh, I'm sorry, Krokowski.
SKI, what?
Sorry about that. I got my skis mixed up there. I got my skis crossed.
We look alike, so it's okay. We're brothers.
So, if there's no objections, we'd look for a motion on those appointments. Is that it? Just on nine? No, I get to do it without, just get to do that. Okay. Okay. So, just a motion on nine, then.
Gale, move to concur with the following mayoral appointments as listed.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Krokowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi. And item 10. Ken, would you like to go ahead with your appointments?
Thank you, Mayor. I as well had, there were no turnover from my standpoint. Just a note on the Personnel Committee, Alderman Tillman will serve as chair. There is a correction on the Capital Improvements Committee, Alderman Guzikowski is chair of that committee. License Committee is Krokowski, Chair Plan Commission, Mayor chairs, and obviously Board of Health, and the rest went on, and Finance Committee, I'm the chair of the Finance Committee. So, with that said, no changes in the notation for Guzikowski as Chair of Capital Improvements.
Any questions regarding assignments? Okay. New business, item 11, consideration of motion for appointments or reappointments as There is one note. In celebrations, on the three-year term, Christine Archambeau has indicated that she will not serve another term for us. So, at this time, we will not reappoint Christine. We will thank her for her service. She's been a valuable asset to that group, but unfortunately, other commitments take her away from us, so. Are there any questions regarding any of the appointments? For the most part, they pretty much remain the same. We contacted the people, made sure they were willing to serve, and wanted to continue. Short of our Weed Commissioner, he just pretty much got saddled with it. If there's no other questions, when you guys are comfortable with them, motion, please, on 11. Out with the updated information on Christine Archambeau, the celebrations, please.
Lorick will move to concur with the mayor's reappointments as follows, as listed below, with the exception of the change with Kristen Archambeau in Celebrations Commission.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Krokowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Tillman.
Hi.
Next is consideration of a motion for our vendor summary report. With us tonight is Bridget to answer any questions.
Bridget Alderman, Rich Dukenyak. Question on number five, $14,000 for, was that the purchase of new tables and chairs? Just, there's the additional need or a need for additional inventory from what was originally purchased when the building went up in 2014?
Correct. We've done, since being in this building, we've done some shifting of some of the tables and chairs between some of the conference rooms, some of, you know, the meeting, the multipurpose room, the EOC, the training center up in the library. So, we've done some shifting, and now we're filling in some of the gaps with the remaining allocated budget from last year, I believe, when we went through the EOC bid.
Okay, and so, not a replacement program?
No, correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for Bridget?
Dukenyak moved to approve the April 25, 2018 vendor summary report in the combined total amount of $398,085.15.
Lorick will second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzikowski.
Hi.
Krokowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Tillman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Item 13 is informational. It's a summarized treasurer's report, and with us is Barb.
Good evening. Tonight is the, I have the treasurer report on investment and baking for the Oak Creek accounts ending March 31, 2018. Just go through the brief summary. Beginning balance was $42,407.22. Ending balance, $42,608,78.51. Interest earned, $57,055.83. The approximately, approximate increase of $205,355.93. I guess that's not approximate, I guess that's exact. Our March tax collection was just over $3.8 million or 0.04% of a total tax levy. Just a note, in that collection included just under $790,000 in lottery credit that we received from the state in March, and the city's share was approximately $1.6 million.
Thank you, Barb. Questions, comments for Barb? Okay, thank you, Barb. Item 14, consideration of a motion to authorize the publication write-off of the 2016 delinquent personal property taxes per the attached reports. Please take a look and direct your questions to Barb. Barb, would you like to give an explanation, as you do every year on this?
Sure.
I think it'll help.
Okay, sure, no problem. So, as in our policy, which is included in the packet, we do two things. We do a publication of the prior year delinquent personal property tax, in this case, it's 2016. And that amount that we would be publishing would be $14,064.84. I've got a couple of things attached. One is a spreadsheet report, which shows those numbers on there. What we do have to take out is any amounts that we cannot publish legally, so something in bankruptcy. So, that's where we get that $14,000 number. Also, the other thing I like to do is include our tax, the report out of our tax system so that you can see where the numbers come from. You know, you can look through that, but on page five of that, it shows where we take out the bankruptcy numbers. The other item that we do here is we write off, or it's removed from the general ledger, the principal portion that, out of the system, it's something that the auditors have asked us to do, and that amount would be $11,348.27. And that's the principal portion minus what we charged back, what we were able to charge back legally to the other taxing jurisdictions. One thing to note is that this does not mean we don't pursue collection. We turn what we are legally able to over to a collection agency. We, and we would continue to pursue that. I think I covered it all.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes. Alderman Krokowski, 1st District. Probably ask the same question every year because it just surprises me that we have businesses that are still in business that owe tax money. I guess that happens. But I notice on the back of the page is Metal Spun Products. I mean, didn't they just move? I mean, we had some interaction with that company. Did the fact that they owe taxes come up in the conversation when we talked about them moving from Druxel Avenue to somewhere here, Druxel Town Square? Anybody?
I was not involved in that, so I couldn't answer that.
There wasn't, Andrew Vickers, City Administrator, there wasn't necessarily discussions as we weren't, we were a part of the discussions in the move, but there was no level of city assistance in that regard. But I would say, moving forward with the redevelopment of the former building, they're waiting on that land transaction. Hopefully, these items can be cleared up with the city once they, once that land transaction with a developer who we talked about in the past few meetings has been consummated.
Thank you.
And it could have something to do with the timing of it, too, because these wouldn't have gone delinquent until sometime in 2017. I don't know when that occurred, so could be the timing. But I will tell you that when I see that, I do bring that to staff's attention. I just did one a few weeks ago that will be looked into.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Motion, please.
Gale, move to authorize the publication write-off of the 2016 delinquent personal property tax per the attached reports.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Krokowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukenyak.
Hi.
Tillman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Great, thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Item 15 is consideration of a resolution of declaring intent to exercise a special assessment powers under Section 3.200 of the municipal code for the installation of a water main in South 27th Street from West South Branch Boulevard to 970, 970 feet south of West South Branch Boulevard. There you go. Go for it. Throw left at you.
Well, it's easier to see on the map, Ron Pritzlaff, Oak Creek Water and Sewer. This project is, I would call it a water quality project. We're resolving two dead ends with about 1,000 feet of 12-inch pipe. Happens to be in 27th Street, in between Oakwood Road and South Branch, and generally starting at South Branch, traversing about 1,000 feet across the frontage of four properties. And projects roughly $155,000, of which the utility would be taking care of 57% of that. And just asking to get the ball rolling in terms of moving on towards a public hearing and approval for this one.
Questions for Ron?
We'll be in the right-of-way. I don't believe we'll be in the road.
Okay. And then, timing-wise, wouldn't you actually expect this to happen?
Well, we're bringing a consultant on board within the next couple of weeks.
This is a project for this year or next year?
No, it'll get done... It'll be done by winter of... It'll be done before the end of the year. Winter of '18.
How many property owners are affected?
Four. They're all commercial. It's the old fireplace shop and a couple other properties up there.
Okay. Nothing else? Motion, please.
Guzikowski makes a motion to accept Resolution Number 11936-050118, a preliminary resolution declaring intent of to exercise special assessment powers under Section 33.200 of the Municipal Code for the installation of water main in 27th Street from West South Branch Boulevard to 970 feet south of West South Branch Boulevard, and establish a public hearing date of June 5, 2018.
Kerkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Item 16 is also consideration of a resolution for another water main project. This one's on East Forest Hill Avenue and is almost just short of 3,000 feet west to South Pennsylvania Avenue, and another 1,300 feet west-south of Pennsylvania Avenue. Ron?
Those projects a little bit in no man's land. It again is gonna... It's not as much a water quality project this time around as it is a fire flow and pressure project. In this case, if you look at your map on the east side of the project towards Pennsylvania, we've got some of the worst fire flows and pressures in the city. So, we want to correct that by installing a new main, basically from west of the train tracks all the way to about 1,300 feet west of Pennsylvania Avenue. So, the project would be... is roughly a $390,000 project, of which we would pay 60% of that as an assessment, or I mean, without assess... You know, we've got... It would be a directional drill project, so the majority of this main would not be an open-cut situation. It'd be all a directional drill. So, the drill goes underdrown. You pull the pipe through the ground. There's no excavation except for... except certain points where you have to dig a pit. So, minimal damage to the road or the right-of-way in that area. And, like I said, this is to correct a fire flow problem in the area. And we were affecting 12 properties, of which there's Milwaukee County, there's railroad, there's private, there's a smattering of different properties in this location.
Questions for Ron? Ron, is this just creating a redundant loop east to west?
Well, there is a dead end there, you know, on the... starting at the west end, so we are creating a loop there, but that's really not the main point of the project. The main point is to get our fire flows up. We're down in the neighborhood of 25 PSI to 30 PSI in that neighborhood, and we want to be up in that 35 PSI range, and this will really help us out there.
If other questions? Motion, please.
Sure. Dukniak move to approve Resolution Number 11937-050118, a preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under Section 3.200 of the Municipal Code for the installation of water main in East Forest Hill Avenue from 2,900 feet west of South Pennsylvania Avenue to 1,300 feet west of South Pennsylvania Avenue, and establish a public hearing date of June 5, 2018.
Kerkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukniak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Great, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Item 17, consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map for Williams Zantis Wisp Park for the property at 300 West Oakview Parkway.
Thank you, thank you, good evening. This is, in its simplest term, just reapproving a map that the council approved more than a year ago. State statute did not allow a certified survey map to be recorded. It has to be recorded within 12 months of the last date of approval. Since the map was recorded in December of 2016, that time has lapsed. Nothing has changed. The map is exactly as was approved by the council previous to that. The only thing I will note is that in the resolution... actually, in the motion, the resolution is correct. That's not Williams Zantis, it's Wisp Park LLC. And this is for the lot in Oakview, on West Oakview Parkway.
Questions for Doug? Seeing none, motion?
Gale, move to approve Resolution 11938-050118, approving a certified survey map for Wisp Park LLC for the property at 300 West Oakview Parkway.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Item 18 is consideration of a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Milwaukee and Milwaukee County for the installation, operation, and maintenance of traffic signals at the intersection of 13th and Drexel Avenue. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, of course, related to the reconstruction project of 13th Street, which is a county trunk highway V through the city, which Milwaukee County will be getting underway with that construction here in the coming days or weeks. At any rate, this will include also reconstruction of the intersection of Drexel and 13th Street, and that includes all new traffic signals. And it is Milwaukee County's policy that the local municipality enter into an agreement for responsibilities on those signals. Signals will be owned and maintained by Milwaukee County. They do require some cost sharing with the local municipality, and that's what this item is related to. Kind of outlined items 1 through 5 on the report on the cost share responsibilities. I can go over them very briefly. The complete construction costs are to be paid by Milwaukee County. They will own and maintain them. Maintenance, ongoing power costs will be shared between Milwaukee County and the city. They will... When maintenance is required, they will do the maintenance, and they will invoice the city for 50% of that. Same goes for future upgrades to the traffic signals. Those are shared equally with the city and the county. There is emergency vehicle preemption equipment that the city has requested be a part of these traffic signals. That, of course, is for our police and fire. And so, the cost of that installation is on the city, and also, all costs of ongoing maintenance and replacement of that equipment is the city's responsibility. And then, there are also some streetlights that are related to the signals. Basically, the signal arms will also have a traffic... or, excuse me, a streetlight head on there, and that is the city's responsibility. The county does not include street lighting on their projects. So, basically, that is the gist of the agreement. There is some significant grant money associated with the project, so even the cost of the EVP system is really just 20% of the actual cost of the installation. So, I would say a fairly good deal for the city as far as the EVP equipment.
Questions for Mike? Greg?
Alderman, Lorick. I just was curious as to the... I don't know if there's typical timing. I know they're going to be tearing up 13th Street here real soon. Is this specifically the traffic lights and stuff? Is that typically done at the end of a project, or is it just worked in whenever?
It's worked in, because what you're going to see is that they're going to take apart the existing signals. They're going to put up some temporary signals, and that will help move the traffic through the intersection. If they're doing it in phases, they're going to do one half and run the traffic on the other. So, they need to be able to be kind of dynamic with those operations and be able to switch that as needed. So, that's what you'll see. And then, the traffic signals themselves, the permanent ones, will be towards the end of the project.
Anyone else? No? If nothing else, item 18, motion, please.
Lorick moves that the council adopts Resolution Number 11933-050118, approving an agreement between the city of Oak Creek and Milwaukee County for the installation, operation, and maintenance of traffic signals at the intersection of 13th Street and Drexel Avenue.
Kerkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Toman.
Item 19 is also consideration of a resolution approving the agreement between the city of Oak Creek and Milwaukee County for the installation, operation, and maintenance of traffic signals at the intersection of Rossin and Sixth Street.
This is very similar to the previous item. This is the county's intersection improvements at Sixth and Rossin. A big part of the improvements will be complete replacement of the signals, so same deal points as the 13th and Drexel agreement.
Questions on Sixth and Rossin? Motion?
Kerkowski will make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 11934-050118, approving an agreement between the city of Oak Creek and Milwaukee County for the installation, operation, and maintenance of traffic signals at the intersection of Rossin Avenue, County Highway BB, and Sixth Street.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzikowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
And item 20 is also consideration of a resolution approving the same agreement... similar agreement between the city of Milwaukee and Milwaukee County for the installation, operation, and maintenance of the traffic signals at Rossin and 10th Street. Same thing, Mike?
Same thing.
Except for location.
Except for location. This is 10th and Rossin.
Hopefully, they replace the sensor there. Pull up on a motorcycle, it's never changing on you.
Yes, that was a problem with the old detector loops. And now, they've got cameras that identify that their vehicle's queued up, so that solves that.
Yes, that's good and bad news. On camera again, so... Any questions? Motion, please.
Kerkowski make a motion, the council adopt Resolution Number 11935-050118, approving an agreement between the city of Oak Creek and Milwaukee County for the installation, operation, and maintenance of traffic signals at the intersection of Rossin Avenue, County Highway BB, and 10th Street.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
And item 21 is the License Committee. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kerkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. The minutes of the April 24 meeting are attached, and I hope you've had an... everybody's had an opportunity to look at the common council report. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Kerkowski make a motion to adopt the License Committee recommendations as listed on the May 1, 2018 License Committee Report.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
That gets us to item 22, and that's consideration of a motion to convene in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Parent 1, Parent E, consider a proposed term sheet between the city of Oak Creek and Oakview Industrial Property III LLC regarding the property at 10861 South Howell Avenue. Common Council, President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub E, to consider a proposed term sheet between the city of Oak Creek and Oakview Industrial Property III LLC regarding the property at 10861 South Howell Avenue.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukniak.
Hi.
Toman.
Hi.
Gale.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Great. At this time, we will convene in closed session, and upon its conclusion, we will return.
Hi.
Guzikowski.
Hi.
Kerkowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukniak.
Okay. Now, an open session, and no action will be taken tonight. With that, we can move for adjournment. Just one announcement. There is a plant sale going on. I believe it's this weekend, am I correct?